Older either. She older.
She's younger.
From what I can see.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, of course. Two minutes. I love that. All right, can I get everybody's mics out when it gets started?
Is it really that time?
Everybody's mics are on, Katie, we're live AV.
Yep.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you to those that are in person and for all those that are tuning in online. We're grateful. I'd like to turn it over to Katie to call roll.
Schumate.
Here.
Cox.
Here.
Cosmar.
Here.
McNabb.
Here.
Mulnar.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Great, we have no absent members, so nobody to excuse. What I'd like to do is open up for public comment. We'd like to have a public comment on the opening. Our agenda topics today, our city administrator is the focus, and then an open discussion on other topics that might be raised by council. And so I'd love to open up for public comment, and then we'll have another public comment period after we close the council discussion.
Wayne Granton, three zero four nine zero, South Gibraltar. It's good that you're returning money to the people, but I don't like your stipulation on it, that you have to send in a thing for the water, lead water pipes. There might be a lot of senior citizens' stuff that can't do that, or don't know how to, and I think that would be a hinder on, you know, getting the money back for them.
I appreciate that comment.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this evening? Just to make sure everybody's got the right detail around that scenario. What, Wayne, thank you, Wayne, for the comment. What Wayne was referring to was, we have our budget resolution that's going to be coming on the next council meeting, on the 28th, for council approval, if they so chose. We've obviously had our public hearing on that as well, and a lot of internal discussions leading up this process. When it comes to water, to our residents that may not be familiar with what Wayne was referring to, we know that water bills are a really important topic for the community of Gibraltar. We also know that we have a lot of infrastructure that needs improvement, and a lot of existing bonds and other commitments, including our requirement to pay for the water that we have to acquire for our residents, that come into the bill. I know that Vince had done a presentation publicly to just better understand transparently how our bills are calculated, so that every home knows how we're getting to the number that you are responsible for paying. But what we do feel is really important is when we save, we want our residents to save. And so there's two things that we've proposed in our budget. One topic is that we have to absorb a increase from Great Lakes Water Authority for the amount that we have to pay for our water. That increase is 12 cents. So while that number might sound small to everybody, that number is amplified and perpetual across all the billing cycles. What we felt was important as a city of Gibraltar was to not pass along that increase to our residents. So we're proposing in our budget to absorb, as a city, that additional 12 cents. And you can imagine that will have a perpetual increase for us to have to absorb as a city of Gibraltar, thus saving our residents from having to absorb that themselves. That's one component. And there is no hook or requirement for any residents. We want to do the right thing and return money to you by absorbing a rate increase that you would otherwise have to absorb. The second thing is, we wanted to further signal, when we save, you save, by providing every household in the city of Gibraltar $25 off their water bill, as a one-time credit. But in order to provide that, we also have an ongoing need to capture data on our lead lines. It's a critical need, state-driven, we have to do this. So we felt that it was appropriate to have the $25 credit, if each resident or household, I should say, is able to fill out a very short link that helps us capture some information around the lead lines at their home, potentially. So that was what Wayne had referred to. Wayne, thank you for the comments. We feel we're doing the right thing on both fronts, in absorbing the increase and giving the household money back, $25 per house in the Gibraltar, with the requirement of that survey completion. But I hear you loud and clear, and we'll make sure we do anything we can to cater to demographics that might have challenges on completing that link. So it's a good learning for council, perhaps a print option or other means of capturing that information, so that nobody is hurdled on what is a minimum requirement of completing some information, but could be a problem for some that may not have the digital ability to do that. So thank you, Wayne.
So you've got to fill that survey out to get that $25 off?
Yeah, you have to fill the link out to get the $25 per household. We're glad to expand on the details required for that, but again, it's quite minimal in nature, a very short and sweet exercise for us to make sure we capture the information while giving the money back to the households.
I want to say, there's a lot of senior citizens might not have the capability, you know?
Yeah.
Like, I'm not at the stuff either, so.
And I hear you, and that's why I think it's a really good call. Thank you for the comment, because what we'll do is we'll ensure that we have a print-based option, perhaps, or some other means of catering to demographics that may not be able to access the online survey. Good learning, thank you. So with that being said, any other public comment? All right, we're going to jump into the topic that this study session was designed for. Council, thank you for advocating for the study session. And for those that have been tuning in, we sure have, city administrator is a really important topic for the city of Gibraltar. So that's what we're here to talk about, as well as then segue into any other discussion items, and I have a couple that I'd like to raise. With the city administrator, just want to kind of give a quick synopsis for everybody to be on the same page. Michael Landis left on February 2nd, and we were incredibly fortunate that council had put their heads together and worked with our resources around us to what we felt was the right move, rather than to rush into a long-term hire, to provide time for the transition management and to pursue an interim city administrator. I sit here saying that was the best decision we could have ever possibly made. Vince, you have been an incredible asset to the city of Gibraltar and our residents in the operation. The work you've done in the short term has empowered the long-term more than you will ever appreciate, number one. Number two is, it showed us what good looks like, an incredible expert and set of expertise, and that is no discounting anybody else that's sat in that seat. I'm saying, as somebody who's fresh into local government and doesn't know what really incredible work looks like, because we're learning as we speak, to have the opportunity to work alongside you and to watch what you bring to the table, your deep and wide experience and expertise, your understanding of the surrounding communities, given your firsthand experience, your knowledge on any topic we encounter, your strategic guidance and direction you've given to council has just been absolutely invaluable. And so we're really appreciative of that.
Appreciate the opportunity, it's been a good enjoyment for me as well.
Vince is a very good teacher.
Second all of that, very much, yeah.
And so, thank you. So with that being said, if there's one thing you know, I've heard some feedback on, we have long meetings here in this administration, and many meetings, it's because there's a ton of work to do. And I hope everybody feels that we're focused on addressing all of that work head-on, as much as time allows. With that being said, one of the things that we were very methodical was, upon securing Vince, was we wanted to make sure we were very thorough in our pursuit of the talent pool for a long-term city administrator hire. I don't think we could have done anything more in our thoroughness to accomplish that focus. What we did was cast a net out for open applications, establish a committee that could review applications, make recommendations for council. Council had sessions to review said applications. I believe we had 11 in total that came through into the talent pool for consideration. We were able to shortlist that to four. We had a very long meeting with interviews of each of the four. We then reconvened and further discussed that as council. We identified a shortlist of two that we were focused on considering. We then made a decision, a motion, to conditionally hire one of those candidates. I know I commented on this in one of the public meetings around the challenges that we faced when we were trying to lock down that hire. We had some red flags. Communication broke down, and we had a honest discussion, Councilman Mulnar and I had an honest discussion with that candidate, to express our concerns on the lack of communication and what was a critical window of us unanimously expressing the desire to hire, but unable to complete the actual formal hiring process and the requirements for doing that. To me, it was a blessing, because it led to a candidate who acknowledged that this wasn't the right next step for them, and informed us as council that we made the right decision to not go rush, to be very methodical, and to call out where we felt a gap was present before we made a final hiring decision. What I'm here to raise with council tonight is that I think we've been very exhaustive in our search, and this has been a many months-long process. The good news is that council had motioned to support Vince, for all the reasons mentioned, continuing on in a part-time capacity through the end of 2024. So I just want to be very clear that we've allocated time and we have the budget to accommodate Vince's time. So we know the good news is that we have a part-time capacity, but technically speaking, on paper, Vince's last day is the end of May, from a full-time capacity, and it would trigger that up to 10 hours capacity through the end of 2024. So here we are, sitting here together as council, in a situation that we need to address, which is, we have a pending cliff for Vince's full-time capacity. We have an exhaustive search that led to no viable candidate for the city of Gibraltar for the long term. And so I've been working to just offline, have some conversations, and I know this is a lot to put on the table, to digest, but I want to put a proposal together for council to consider. That proposal is to consider another amazing individual that's a part of the city of Gibraltar operation, Chief Tangway. I've had discussions with him, and I believe other council members may have had some discussions with him, I believe Vince has had some discussions amongst some of our other department personnel. I think we're in a very interesting opportunity as a city of Gibraltar to consider the pursuit of Chief Tangway as the next city administrator for Gibraltar. I'm going to talk through some details, and then I want to open up for a discussion with council. I see some faces amongst council. The good news is, public, that this shows you that we abide by Open Meetings Act. This isn't an offline plotting amongst council. We are literally sitting here talking about this with fresh eyes for the first time, because we want to make sure we're transparent in how we operate. I wanted, out of respect for Chief Tangway and our personnel, to have some offline discussions, to even see if that was an option, and here we are. It is an option, Chief Tangway is interested in the opportunity. So let me just summarize what I see as an opportunity to consider, and I want to dive into deep discussion with council. Chief Tangway has done an absolutely incredible job, in my opinion, I know probably the opinion of many, as our police chief. I know that he has optimized processes, he has developed new policies and operating procedures, he has introduced technology incredibly effectively and efficiently, which has paid more dividends than anybody can ever appreciate in the short dialogue we're having right now. He is a absolute wonderful culture fit for our city personnel, our council. He is incredibly assertive and effective and empathetic in his interface with our community and all of the different components of his department that interface with that community. I could go on for days on how strongly I feel about Chief Tangway and those skillsets. Why I think this is such an important consideration, I'm going to paint three pictures that I want council to consider. Number one is, we have a known leader with an incredibly mentioned skillset that directly aligns with what we need in the city administrator role. Every single criteria I just hit on is imperative skillsets for a future city administrator. That's number one. Number two is, it gives us the opportunity, if council so chose, to put Chief Tangway in that seat, to then have a succession discussion on who's our next police chief. And for those that have been around the city in the discussion, right, I think that was the best decision that could have been made to have him hired as police chief at the time. And I think he's done a wonderful job in building the machine the way it needs to be built. Now we're in a situation where we have individuals within our department who had previously put their hands up to apply for the police chief role, so let's start there, who are going through thorough training, as we speak, to further qualify their ability of leadership in context of that type of role. So I think we have a very interesting opportunity. I'm a huge believer in empowering and promoting and developing within, and so I have an interesting situation where I think we have an opportunity to think about the succession plan for the city of Gibraltar. And today, the baseline is different. The work that Chief has done to set that department up for tremendous success, now that baseline of a future succession, an individual stepping in there, it's a much more optimized and refined system. It's a much more transparent, open communication culture. So I feel even better about the opportunity to potentially promote within and have somebody that could fill that seat enter a system that is so optimized and refined and such a strong culture to operate it within, compared to, again, no discount to the past, what Chief Tangway started on a baseline with. So that's number two. So number one, he's the right fit, in my opinion. Number two, the succession plan is very interesting to me. And that's, I don't want to be tunnel vision this, I think we have an interesting succession plan internally, and I think there's a lot of advantages to that. It does not mean that we can't go look at other options, right, in that process. You know us, I think we like to do thorough rush, not rush processes. So we have an option to consider there. Part three, which is important, then I'm going to stop talking, turn it over to council, is Vince has been incredible and flexible, and so one of the things that I think we need to entertain is Vince is looking at his other commitments that he has in life, including his family, and the fact that he was retired before he sat in this seat. And he's willing and able to maybe consider a little more flexibility in his schedule as it relates to post-full-time capacity. So we obviously establish an agreement of up to 10 hours, right? There might be a need to maybe revisit that agreement, if council so chose, to maybe increase that threshold slightly, so that Vince can serve in a capacity through the end of the year as a transition partner amongst many other things. No, that's a good segue to the document I printed out for you. I'm a big believer in highest and best use of an individual. And so to orient Vince in regards to the part-time capacity, Vince had kindly assembled what I think is an incredibly strong list of seven focus areas, so that pending his transition from full-time to part-time, there's seven areas that he could focus his time on. Again, right now, we have up to 10 hours, we might have to raise that window for the reasons that you'll see described. For the public, those items are solid waste bid, I'll get to that topic later in today's discussion, but we have obviously an ongoing RFP process with a timeline, with subsequent contract negotiations and approvals and implementations. Vince has got an incredible skillset there, so I'd say we leverage him for that. Number two is, we got $1 million in the grant for our West Jefferson Water Main. He's done an incredible job championing the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, he's got incredible expertise in that arena, so I'd recommend we prioritize his time for that. Number three is, we got $50,000 to review our ordinance language. What a great person, in my opinion, to take a leadership role in driving that process, and we're going to talk more about that today at a council meeting on the 28th. Number four is Infrastructure Advisory Committee. He's done great work on our bridge inspections broadly, as well as the Horse Island Bridge project. He's done work on capital improvement planning and the programmatic approach to that, the asset management plans we have in place, how that relates to our finances, there's the lead and copper element, there's the ongoing sewer lining element, so I put that as bucket number four, obviously according to Vince's documentary assembled, but that's a huge area that I think we can focus his expertise on. Number five would be our negotiations related to police that are upcoming. We're waiting on a list of requests from police to initiate that dialogue, we have our committee that will champion that. Thank you again, Councilman Valentine and others. Number six is playing a critical role in DDA. We're in a very, I would say, awesome position from a financial perspective and an ability to just kind of streamline the operation and deploy the financials that we have towards downtown developments and improvements, so it'd be great to have him as a leader on that. And number seven on the list is intentional, because the blessing here is that Chief brings all of those incredible assets to the table that I described, but we have Vince in a part-time capacity, who I think is the beautiful roundoff to the pair. They work so incredibly well together, so Vince could help with the transition, Vince could bring expertise in areas that Chief wouldn't have expertise in, because he hasn't done those projects specifically in his past, right? And it would give everybody, Chief and Vince and all of us in the community, a lot of assurance that we have two parties working together effectively, with Vince in a part-time capacity, to focus on six headline projects and bring supplemental expertise to Chief Tangway, where he needs to consult during the transition window. I know there's a lot of talking, and I know that's a lot to absorb, but I feel very strongly that that would be the incredible path for the future of our city, and I'll stop talking and open up to council.
I'll go. Yeah, I know we talked about at our last meeting, thinking outside of the box, and in the box of just putting out a advertisement for a position, we landed where we landed. And thinking outside the box, the couple ideas that were circulated were maybe getting a headhunter to help look for talent, but what we have here internally in town, and the opportunity that you described with succession in the police department, seems like the best viable option. And not only just the best viable option, but a really, really, really good option. And so I think it couples the need for experience with the need for technical advantage, and also, it's not somebody who's job hunting for the next rung up the ladder that is going to leave us in a year or two after they get a little bit of experience for a community that's larger than us. Gives us an opportunity to have somebody that might stick around for a few years and help be in a position to create stability for us in the premier leadership position that is the opening that the city administrator is for us. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and, you know, I'm excited to see if Chief Tangway's, you know, how interested he is and how the rest of the council feels about it.
I agree with you. You know what, I agree with you. Frankly, I, he's impressed me since his interview when we hired him for police chief. He has done a wonderful job, and he's just done everything that I had hoped he'd do when he would come here. Yeah, I think there's some areas that he may not know, that we probably have to train him in. Like I said, if we have Vince to back him up, I think, and, you know, and he's great, you know, if you give him a task, he's learning it, he'll learn it, you know what I mean? So I think that might be a really viable, viable option. And definitely, there's people in the department ready to come up to police, you know, so that might be a really good option.
I agree, I believe he's more than capable.
One of the things, I'm sorry, one of the things I felt really strongly about from a city administrator's position is somebody who could look at a resident who came in with a concern and say, "How can I help you?", and really honestly mean it. And Vince has shown that, Chief's also shown that from his position. When somebody comes in and has something that they want to talk about, he gives them the polite courtesy and time of day to help them solve their issue, or at least discuss their issue, and that's something he takes very seriously that I've noticed. Sorry, Pat.
Chief Tangway has been so much more than the police chief for this city. He's done an outstanding job, I've been very impressed with him. However, I'm a little concerned about promoting from within, because, I don't know if you guys know some of the history, but we've had some bad officers here that created big, great abuses, because they all grow up together, they all work with each other every day, there's no discipline, there's no administrative actions taken on some of these people in the end. So he was great, because we hired him from the outside, but the police department, I think, is so much better now. I'd like to see him do both, if he could, because this wouldn't be the first time. We had Paul here that was both the chief and the city administrator. I don't know if he's willing to do that, but...
I think that'd be too much, I mean, things have changed a lot since Paul was the city administrator, there's so much, and that was my only worry with Rick, is because there is so much more government, you know, in sight, so there's a lot more reports, there's a lot more things that we'd have to do, so there was no way I'd try to put that much work on one person, you know?
I really appreciate the commentary, and it's something that Vince can speak to now, if you're open to that. Sorry to interrupt.
If I may, I know it's the council members, Wooden, Cox haven't commented yet, but I do have kind of a follow-up with Mr. Valentine's, so do you want me to?
Please, yeah, if you could address that, because I know we had a brief discussion on...
I think in part, I spoke with the city manager in Monroe that replaced me, Dave Robbins, oh, I'm sorry, Dave Robinson. Dave's background was, he retired from Dearborn as their deputy police chief, goes to Belleville as their police chief, and then over about a year later, he became the city manager as well as the police chief. And so I had a discussion with him, because I wanted his perspective on it, and it was very, very good, because he did both. And I think, you know, if you contemplate it, I think in some ways, he was glad that he had both capacities, because he could see through some of the improvements that he initiated, but he said the one thing he didn't have, he didn't feel at the time, was a strong command. I don't think that's the case here. I think, as you said, there's a couple in the department that may be ready to move forward, but there is a strong command presence. And Dave basically said, and I don't know if the chief had talked with him today, but Dave had offered to talk with the council to get the perspective that he had as someone who'd worked through the police ranks to ultimately become the city manager. And, you know, I think part of it is, is just, to be honest with you, as small as Gibraltar is, to get the candidate list that you had was actually pretty good, better than I would have anticipated. And it didn't work out, but, you know, going back out would probably be, you know, a fool's errand, I'm not sure you would come back with anything remotely as good as what you had. But, you know, you do have, you know, I think internally here, you know, someone that has, you know, to get to a command level, you know, like the chief, you have to have structure, discipline, organization skills, the ability to work with people, you know, even in, you know, difficult confrontational situations, and in his case, he's got a good rapport with, you know, his troops as well as the rest of the employees, and so that's a quality that's phenomenally important, I think. Is there a learning curve? Mr. Robinson in Monroe said, "Yeah, there were some things that, you know, he had to learn on the fly", but these are smart people that are capable of learning as new challenges. So I throw that out there, because Dave did offer that perspective if council wanted to chat with him and get their, you know, his perspective on this type of transition, so.
And I appreciate the, thank you, Vince, and I appreciate the comment, Councilman Valentine, because it's something we have to consider, that's why we're here in the study session to discuss that. So you're suggesting the concerns around succession considerations, and internal only is one, right? And I think the other piece is the double duty, if you will, right? My biggest concern is the reasons mentioned, right? I want to make sure somebody's set up for success in a sustainable bandwidth position, right, and not overwhelm physically and mentally an individual with what is a very different workload today than it might have been in the history, right? And I think the good news is, either way, it's something we need to talk about, Councilman Valentine, because regardless of what council chooses, there's going to be a transition window, where if he was chosen, it's going to have to do an element of both, right? Transition up a new chief and manage the city administrator. Either way, I think it's fruitful to hear from people that have done it, like Vince had recommended, and really, I want to also consult Chief if he is going to be considered for this position on, you know, his personal interests and appetite for any considerations council imposes, so, thank you.
I love the fact that Tangway may become the city administrator, I love that, and I think he's the best person that we could get.
Yep, and you flagged some concerns, and we'll work through those concerns together, and I appreciate that.
I'm just concerned about the police department hiring from within, because there've been some really bad issues that were not addressed, were overlooked, they're downright criminal, that these cops were getting away, this one particular officer that, and the dispatcher, was getting away with because there was no foresight, or no administrative foresight over what he was doing, it was ignored.
And I appreciate that. I think, just to be creative conflict here, I think that situation, we are at a whole different world today with what Chief has done with that department, process, procedure, technology, command, culture, communication, for the reasons described, but I hear you, and it's got to be something we talk about, so, thank you. Councilwoman Wood, did you have?
Yeah, I'm completely surprised that you brought that up. I mean, seriously, because when Michael was still here, I suggested that to Tangway, that "Why are you not putting in for the city administrator?". I thought he was perfect then, and I realized that I'm the only one that voted no for him as the chief of police, and that was only because of the way the process was handled, and I explained that to him, so I'm bringing that up again, Chief Tangway, because he tells everybody that. But I'm completely surprised, and I think that, I think it's a great thing to hear, seriously. I think he's going to be great.
Thank you. Councilman Cox, last but not least.
I think it's a win-win. I see it through the eyes, as you explained it, as the rest of the council members had discussed, but I am in favor of succession promotion. I've been, one of the issues I had as a resident was the process. I've been, one of the issues I had as a resident was the process of the way it was handled before, right? From the lens that I was looking through. So, I'm an advocate on all points that were selected.
This is amazing discussion. Councilman Valentine, you flagged some concerns, and we will take those seriously in regards to how we handle the process, number one. Number two, my suggestion for council is, we need to give some time for Vince. There's a couple of things that I've suggested here. It's all going to converge on a June 10th date, just to give you the punchline here. I would suggest that Vince has some other life considerations that he needs to work out, but that he can come back to us before June 10th with his actual specific time availability, aligned with the document I passed out to you all today, so that council knows maybe if we need to dial up his hours to accommodate that commitment, but we'll have a good firm understanding of his timeframe, right? That's one. Two is, I think we need to give chief some time to navigate what he thinks that could look like, both from a transition and succession considerations, that he can provide a sound recommendation to council on how that would play. And my ask for council is, in the interim, we have a council meeting on the 28th, so we can talk more about some of the specifics that we need to, or any directives we need to give, but I would hope that we could take all the information we just had today, which is seemingly support for the proposal, and converge on a decision point on June 10th, so that if we are in a position to consider appointment of chief and a directive on succession planning, that we can make that by June 10th to make sure we have continuity in the operation. So, that's my proposal. Any feedback on next steps from that perspective?
I'm a huge advocate of thinking outside the box to solve things, and not, not just, you know, playing the hand we're dealt, but really, really looking deeply at it. And this seems like a resolution that, that is really well thought out, and it's, you know, we tore down the walls and looked outside, and seems to be really, really viable and a win for our community. In terms of next step, at our, at our council meeting on the 28th, certainly a continued conversation.
Yep.
And the outline that you have there to look at both chief's considerations time-wise and city administrator, interim city administrator Vince, to look at his considerations as well, and give them that extra parameter of timeline that, that they need, I think is reasonable. I think that we're making do, not, not only making do, I think we're excelling at the community leadership that, that is here. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to wait to June 10th to make some decision considerations at that point, so I'm, I think next step, that timeline seems reasonable.
Seem good to everybody else? Councilman Valentine?
I'd like to just say, okay, we, we know that Tangway probably could be the city administrator. Who, in your, in the interest of transparency, who is your pick for chief of police?
It's, I don't have that discussion today ready, right? I think it's, we have to go by the application process.
If we're going to do from within, I'd like to see what Tangway thinks about the people.
Precisely. I think it's, it's kind of what I alluded to with Chief Tangway needs to make a recommendation on timeline and his recommendation as our current chief and what he's done, and then we think about how that relates to the kind of application and interview process, which I think we can work together to, Councilman Molnar's point, we can build on this discussion 28th with any advance information we have, and then we can convene on the 10th with, like, a knowing path of decision-making. If that sounds fair to you.
Yeah, I do, I think there's more than one applicant.
Yeah, 100%.
Because I know I've been watching him, who's been taking classes and who's, and we have, we have a few candidates who's really been officers who's really been trying to learn more.
I think it's what's important to me is who Chief Tangway thinks would be the next police chief. That's what's important to me.
And that's why I want to give...
Because I trust his judgment.
100%. And that's why I want to give him the time to work through timeline and recommendations for succession considerations, that council can have all the information they need to make some decisions. Any further discussion on the city administrator topic?
I think we're going in the right direction.
I'm ecstatic about it. I don't want to get out of the ball, but it just feels right, so...
He's going to have a good teacher.
Amen. No, if there's no further items on the city administrator topic, I know we have these study sessions, and they have an open discussion element. I was just thinking about, since we have each other, some topics throughout my mind, so if I may, I was going to throw out a couple, but does anybody have anything they want to throw out there before I get to some updates?
I think we should probably set a date and just do a study session every month. You know, go ahead and, I mean, I know we can't vote it now, but I think these are really good for us to kind of learn and where we want to go and talk, and not have, you know, three or four hour meetings during our, during our meetings, you know?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, it might be something we want to think about, just adding one, one a month, one study session a month, and, especially if we're coming to get, we're going to do ordinances, because I know I've done the, I was on the school board when we did the policies. That takes a lot of time. Those take a lot of time. They really do. They take a lot.
Can I build on, on that a little bit from, from my perspective? What we've done, or what whoever's quarterback to this, our mayor and our city administrator, but the infrastructure advisory committee, how they get together at different times, 10:00 AM on Thursdays, and we notice it for public, there may be a quorum, may not, noticing it for public availability to be able to be part of it. And I think that that really cuts down on the amount of time that we end up having to spend at the council meetings on those issues particularly. And I know last time we were there, I think everybody was there for the most part.
Not me.
I wasn't going to call out anyone.
I called myself out.
But, but no, we had really, really excellent dialogue, and really got to hammer through. We didn't make any decisions, there was no motions, there was no decision-making, but it allowed us time to have dialogue amongst the group and really ask questions and get...
Get information?
Yeah, get really good, open dialogue, and I, and I think that really helps streamline some of the other stuff. And again, it's, it's open to the public. It's noticing, there may be four people there, there may be less than, maybe more than, and that avenue really worked well, and I wonder if that couldn't work well for... Yeah.
But the only thing, we do them early in the day, most people at work, you know, I mean, they can't, you know, a lot of, can't get off, you know, they would love to see it, but they can't even watch it. And they could watch if you televised it, like, afterwards, but you're not going to get a whole lot during the day unless you're going to get, people's retired, or, you know...
The important thing, though, I think with, if you're available during the day, is that you still have to take action publicly, but I think a lot of cases, I will tell you from an administrator's standpoint, it's very helpful to have a timeframe where you can spend and lay it out without watching the clock. You can just focus on maybe even just one issue, and that's it. And, you know, you can take an hour, at least everybody understands it, so by the time it comes to the city council for action, you have a good understanding of it, and usually you'll have a council member kind of articulate the thought process that led to a decision. And I think that, you know, the decision itself will be in a public forum, but the understanding in the background, we could provide that in a series of two or three meetings, but I think it's helpful for everybody to hear the same thing at the same time with the same questions.
Then, one of the other things, you know, when we're, when we're seeing an issue for our first time, and we're up here debating that, sometimes we go home at the end of the night and go, "Ah, shoot, I wish I would have said this, or I wish I would have thought about that." And this, that, that opportunity gives us the, you know, by the time we get to the meeting, we might have think, you know, the next council meeting, we might have thought of, oh, at our last infrastructure meeting, one of the questions I didn't ask, or one of the things we didn't get filled in was, was this. And so then it gives us that, to bring to the next meeting, where we might not have that time when we're on the spot.
And the minister, you know, if I hit the, jump in there, but it's phenomenally important. I mean, in Monroe, what I did was, I haven't sent you updates, but I would send them, you know, bi-weekly. Okay, here's what I have, we have planning, here's what the work session's scheduled, here's some of the topics in the background, and then we talk about it. And by the time it got to the council, those questions were, you know, you would think about it in advance, because you know what the topic was, have your own notes, and so a lot of times, they were prepared, and our regular council meetings went pretty quick because the count, but we did ours, theirs was set by charter to start at 7:30 on the first and third Monday of every month, and so we would start our work sessions at 6:00. And I'd have two or three items on there, just here's what's coming up there, I need your thoughts, comments, and what have you, so by the time you got to the regular meeting... I think you have the flexibility to set your time schedule with the charter here. It's not, it's not hard baked like the one they had in Monroe, so...
And again, public are, are welcome to.
Yes, they are.
That might, that would also be good, because it wouldn't take an extra day out of our busy schedule, if you do, you know, an hour before.
I like that thought process. Any other thoughts from council on the, just basically having sessions to discuss beyond our formal council connections?
I learned a lot at that infrastructure advisory committee. I'm glad I went.
That's awesome.
Yeah, me too.
It's going to be better for me in the evening, based on I am duefully employed, so.
Yeah.
Evenings would be better, more than middle of the day or early days.
I might make a suggestion. We got really good committee activity rolling, so maybe if we take, if everybody's open to the model, we could have other, to your point, Councilman Molnar, like connections scheduled, right, with public notice, but maybe, Marsha, to your point, we could think about, like, an hour before council meetings as a good connection. Everybody's already got that date on their calendar, they should be free, and then it allows us to arrive at council discussion much more efficiently and effectively. So, something to maybe, I'll, I'll put that on the agenda to revisit for the 28th, because we can't take action here, but if you all want to try and implement something like that, I'm open. All good? Any other topics from council, before I get to just a few other topics for you I have tonight? Okay. I think I spoke with, I tried to send notes out, but Priority Waste, we met with the Priority Waste CEO, general counsel and corporate secretary today. This is related to the recycling. I just want to, number one, thank Vince, thank our city attorney, thank Councilwoman Wood, who flagged this issue to begin with, thank council for their support. I know this has been a multi-month process with many meetings. I'm just really proud to say that Priority Waste did the right thing and gave us $26,250 today. It's the right thing for our residents, it's the right thing for our city operation. I will also add that qualitatively, you know, we consulted with Chelsea and Mary and everybody in the city hall, who said that the priority services continue to increase in its quality, the attention to detail that they've provided, the responsiveness. Katie, you could probably speak to that, too, if you have any comments there, but the good news is, we have accountability in place, we have logs and documentation showing that our recycling is actually going to recycling, we have an improved customer service from the viewpoint of the personnel that we have that interface with them, and we have a CEO of a company who, as of today, did the right thing in refunding the money that we owed. And I'm really grateful for that. And so I just bring this up today, because we have an ongoing RFP process for which they, you know, have submitted for, amongst other services that we can consider, and I just ask that we consider as a community that I'm grateful that they did the right thing and made us whole. And it doesn't change the disappointment for what transpired, but it, just like anything in life, when an issue arises, the beauty is, what's the outcome of that? We're made whole, we have better processes in place, and we have increased customer service, and that's a win for the city of Gibraltar, no matter how you cut and slice it. So, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page there. We'll go through the process, we should evaluate every vendor fairly, according to what they submit, and Vince is championing that, so thank you. But Councilman, Councilman Valentine?
Well, what are they doing with our recycle stuff now? Because I thought the reason they did, we're taking it to where it's supposed to go, was they didn't have a place to go.
Yeah, they've solved that issue, actually well prior to this payment being received today, so rest assured that our recycling is going to the recycling, and we've been working with finance to make sure we have the appropriate backup documentation to prove that.
We're showing you a ticket, too, that it's going to...
Yeah, exactly. We have logs, just like we requested, that were the data that helped identify the gap here, right? So, yes, and I'm working with, I want to make sure we're all buttoned up there, so if there's any further process optimization, we'll make sure that happens, but I just think it's important for council to, to look forward and consider the RFP process fairly, and I'm just grateful for that CEO doing the right thing.
When are those RFPs due?
We moved the date to Tuesday, June 4th, and I know that yourself, Art, and the mayor, we're going to do the review, and so I'll probably schedule something the following day. We had three show up to the pre-bid meeting, and so I anticipate we'll get three of them to review. All of them are, you know, good-sized firms capable, all of them have actually done work here in the city of Gibraltar, so it's, you know, I think probably more a function of pricing, as well as if they put any other kind of conditions or stipulations in the bid that may either excite us or disappoint us, one or the other, so, but that's where I think the help with the, with the small committee will help.
Thank you.
But I intend to actually have it on the meeting on the 10th, even though I'm going to be done on the 30th, I'll be at that meeting on the 10th to make sure we do the presentation for that, so...
Any other discussion on that topic?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mary Jarrell, because she is the one who listened to the residents and that were complaining about the recycling, and if it wasn't for her, I mean, because I don't know if she was telling our past city administrator or what was happening, but nothing was being done, so that's kind of what made my husband and I just follow the truck, so, you know? But thank you to Mary for bringing all of that up.
Thank you. Teamwork made the dream work on that one, and I'm grateful for where we've landed today. So, let's look forward at the process and let that prevail. Next topic I wanted to raise, and some of this is going to parallel the council meeting, but just like we discussed, gives us a chance to discuss before we arrive at decision points. Let's go with the ordinance committee. So, Councilman Cox, keep me honest here, because you are a commission member, but simply put, council, for those that tuned in to the planning and DDA meeting, we got $50,000 with no hooks attached to review and hopefully update our ordinance language, which is quite archaic and challenging in regards to applying that to the operation. And so, one thing that was suggested at the planning and DDA was to establish an ordinance committee that can come together and review this, which is a very important transformational discussion that we need to have, so that it has all the right representatives to feed in recommendations to planning, DDA, and council. I want to summarize this, and I want perspective today. We can't make decisions, but I want to arrive at 28th with, with a perspective. So, the planning and DDA commission members volunteered, and big thanks to Jim Bilk and Marie Mendoza-Bach for volunteering to be a part of that committee on the planning and DDA, so we have two commission members there. Spoke with Vince, feel that Vince, our city attorney, and myself could be additional representation if council is supportive of those three additions. Council, we need two representatives from council, in my opinion, at least, so I'd like to have that discussion today on where we think we could go, or if you need more time to reflect, just convene that on the 28th. And then, building official and city planner would be obvious representatives, but want to just open up to council, so that would be the potential structure that I would consider would be relevant, but I want to open up for discussion. So, the discussion is, is that the right structure, number one, and then two, if council has any perspectives on who we should consider for that committee from a council representation?
Sounds like you've got good stakeholders, you know, pretty good, good variety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a larger committee, but it needs to be, in my opinion, because all those have very warranted positions in that discussion.
I know, I have to read through them, yeah, some of them are really outdated, you know?
And Vince is the one that kind of gave some expert guidance on who needs to be there, so that's how this is coming to you today. Any, do we like the structure? Any objections of the structure at large? Is that the right people?
I agree with the structure.
Okay, and then council members, who should we have?
I would like to be part of it. I mean, it's nobody...
You would like to be a part of it?
Yeah.
Okay. I was going to open up to see, but let's go around. Do you have some of that?
So, I like the structure, and I like also the idea of public noticing it, so that there has the opportunity to have public comment before and after. That was something that we did during Jim Gores's administration was reviewing some of the ordinance, it's not a thorough, one like this where we were going this deep, but that was something where they allowed public comment, and that was influential and important. I think that was a good consideration to have there. I think I have a significant amount of interaction with, with the planning commissions and DDA over the last five, six years, and sometimes it's beyond frustrating, so I've gotten a firsthand view of it, and, you know, seen how it works and how it doesn't work. I think I could bring a perspective to that, that committee that, you know, maybe some other people who have not gone in front of those committees might not understand or, or be experienced in.
Awesome. Let's just go around, I like the session flow where everybody can speak, so, Art, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm the same way on that. I agree with Rob, you're not interested.
Agree with, agree with the sentiment shared so far?
Yep.
Okay. Any other additions there?
No.
Councilwoman Wood, what do you think?
Okay, I'm, I'm not even really sure what we're trying to do. We're getting, explain it again.
Yeah, so, so our ordinance language is archaic.
Yes.
And it's problematic because it needs to be updated.
Yes.
And we were trying to figure out the best way to do that, and Vince, another non-Vince, worked successfully to secure us $50,000 in free money. And no hooks. So here we are with a $50,000 package pending the final approvals and process. And we want to take a look thoroughly with experts, building department, city planner involved, to update, review and then update our ordinance language. What was discussed at the planning commission and DDA meeting, and to be fair, I just suggested that in some of the commentary was to make sure we are equipped to do that effectively and efficiently, meaning a very robust transformational review of ordinance language. I propose that we should consider a committee that can be tasked with reviewing and then coming back to planning, DDA and council with a recommendation and checkpoints. So with that being said, the committee was proposed. Vince and I had talked today and we, we wanted to find who the committee will be composed of. And so we want planning and DDA representation. Two of them volunteered in the meeting. We want Vince, the attorney and myself. We want two representatives from council, and we want building official and city planner. So the discussion I want everybody to have today is, do you like the structure of that overall? And then who from council should be those two?
Okay, so you're going through all of the ordinances?
No, just the zoning ordinance.
Just zoning ordinances? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that what we were talking about.
No, thanks for clarification. Do you have any, do you like the structure? Do you have any perspective on who from council should be a part of that?
No, I think, Marcia, did you want to be on it?
Yeah, I'd like to be part of it. And I know Rob's got experience in zoning, he was on the zoning committee.
Marcia and Rob have self-volunteered so far.
That's fine.
I'd like to see councilperson Cosmore and councilman Mulder on the committee.
You'd like to see that? Okay. Councilman Cox, any additional commentary?
Hundred percent agree with the two. I think it's beneficial. I think it's a well-rounded group. It's a serious topic. It's going to help a lot with the planning commission and ZBA as well. It's a win-win. I like win-wins.
You got two win-wins tonight. Look at that. All right. This is great. So that helps inform what we can talk about on Monday, or sorry, Tuesday, the 28th for motion considerations. Next topic is going to be our city planner. I just want to revisit the discussion for open discussion tonight. So if you recall, we had motioned to go out for RFP for a city planner service. I had hopefully relayed my experience, which I've had some challenges in working with our current city planner. And I think I provided those examples, so I won't be redundant here. I would say the planning and DDA commission meeting that I recently was attended Tuesday further kind of amplified some of the concerns I have. You know, I want to have a city planner that's got, is not bringing opinion, but rather bringing expert guidance and feedback and interpretation. I want a city planner that has an astute understanding of the topics that are coming to that forum and has equipped planning, commission and DDA members with all the background information that would be required to have a effective discussion. I want a city planner that is articulate and assertive in their seat so that when the commission members are discussing, they can put the guardrails on it. And it involves the right background and the right framing of what their tasks to do based on their roles and responsibilities. And where it goes tangential, they can intervene and say, look, that's not in scope, here's what is in scope, just assertively and effectively. I hope you all feel like the same way, like that's what we need in that representation. And it benefits our commission members and it benefits the community and the applicants that are facing it, right? So I don't feel we're getting that. And I just, I asked council, we're not here to make a decision today. I proposed to you recommending considering terminating Wade Trim as our city planner. There is a 60-day notice required and allowing the RFP process to prevail, but in the interim window, having McKenna assume those responsibilities. My logic with that was because McKenna's our building department. A big element of that is interface with city planner services. They are a city planner for other communities and offer those services. There wouldn't be any financial impact, like we would absorb the same cost structure, hopefully pending the discussion, that Wade Trim is charging us as McKenna would. To me, it just makes so much more efficiency and effectiveness consideration in the interim while we navigate the bigger picture, which is the RFP for who we want as our long-term city planner. So I'm flagging concerns. Those concerns continue. I appreciate the perspective that council provided on, okay, can we go with a different personnel from Wade Trim? We did start having some of that dialogue. Vince, you can speak to if there was even any advancement in that dialogue. I'm just asking for us to revisit the bigger picture here for the reasons mentioned and consider on the 28th what I will propose, which is a motion to end our partnership with Wade Trim, have McKenna fill that interim service until the RFP process prevails. So I'm going to stop there. I just want to open up for discussion because that's what we're here for tonight. And I just wanted you to have all the background on where my head is rolling as I position that for council tonight. Anything you'd add, Vince? Was that articulated okay?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I did look, and this is as far as I took, had taken it with Wade Trim, looking on their website to further see what planners are out there. And they do have a planner that is here in Michigan, but more as a group. But normally I'm used to seeing, okay, here's all of our team. And, you know, I didn't pursue it any further to call the, the one individual that handled the, the planning in the region. But, but normally I'm used to seeing a lot of personnel that are handling a lot of different things from a planning operation or division of a, a firm like, an engineering firm like Wade Trim. So I'll be honest with you, I sometimes don't necessarily feel that engineering firms do the best job of planning. It's kind of an adjunct, if you will, to, whereas of the professional planning firms, if that's all they do, they're, they're probably a little more dedicated. A sense of over the years, my feeling with that.
Just raising it for.
If you look at, sorry, if you look at McKenna's website, they do have the list of the personnel, and they have multiple planners, they have multiple building inspectors, they have, they have engineers, they have a variety. I know that our neighboring community that, that we partner with quite a bit, Rockwood, uses McKenna for their planning department. They've been satisfied in the conversations that I've had with, with their mayor and a couple of their council people. And, you know, certainly supportive of, of trying something that can get us a little better leadership in that, in that area. And I think we've, we've, you know, we looked at what Councilman Cox had raised at the last meeting was looked at, you know, do we have that similar type of replacement capability as we've, we've flagged to McKenna for the representation in the past? And it looks like we're, we poked at that and are addressing that part of it.
I was going to address that, that. I was the one that requested that we look within that same organization, but I do have to reiterate, and second, the mayor's comments on a frustration level of leadership issues during these meetings that could be addressed. I'll say that.
Appreciate that. Any other comments on this topic?
Recently, I've met the two new representatives from McKenna, I was impressed with them. The one was working late tonight along with Mary, so, I mean, that showed me something.
Yeah, I mean, I think we got to take one step at a time here. I just think this is the best next step for this specific scenario for all the reasons mentioned. We can, I'm going to, I'm just making sure that we had the discussion tonight. I'm going to put it on the agenda. I would ask for a motion from council to consider. Any other questions on, comments on city planner? Well, guess what? That's all I had on the list for this evening. Just, just a side note, subjective commentary. Treasurer Fonti, I just appreciate. He came in, Katie, Treasurer Fonti, Amy and I sat down for a good chunk of time just to talk about the charter, the roles and responsibilities of the treasurer, what we're doing today, or most recently with Treasurer Harp. Thank you again, if you're listening. What the key kind of strategic focus areas are and opportunities are. I'm just really grateful because I feel like Mr. Fonti has shown in many ways, like the dedication to thoroughness and research, and I think exemplified good integrity in regards to like what's best for Gibraltar. And I think I'm, I'm really hoping that the, Mr. Fonti, Treasurer Fonti and Amy have a continued building, working relationship to do really great things for the interim and that treasurer position. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that that meeting took place. I think things are off to a great launchpad. And I think we'll be benefiting from Treasurer Fonti's experience. He's got a lot of experience in payroll and, and broader payment management processes behind it, so I'm looking forward to that. And I think it'll only be upside for Gibraltar. Any other topics you want to cover this evening?
Canal cruise Thursday.
Yes. Canal cruise Thursday. Beautiful weather out in the Jib. I'm really excited about that. Hopefully, hopefully it's going to continue and be better and better. But that being said, we'll close out the discussion unless there is other item, and we'll open up back to public comment before we would look to adjourn.
Good afternoon. I'll try to be brief. I just came to listen about city administrator, but I, of course, have comments about everything you talked about tonight, but I'll be brief.
Please.
First of all, I want to commend council for supporting the mayor and his position on getting rid of Wade Trim. I called this poor man probably more than anyone to hear from any resident in this community. And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. Kathy Lapointe, for whoever doesn't know me, I live on Kingsbridge Drive. What happened with Wade Trim, I should, I, he's very nice, and so he's saying it was this and that and everything. I feel that it was, it was so extreme, like a fraud was perpetrated. When you look at the public notice of them saying that they were minor revisions and everybody on that planning commission was just nodding their head, nobody realized that if that zoning, and it got to the first reading at this table, and still nobody got it, that all that zoning for, you know, industrials three was just called something different and was going to be shoved down our throat. That would have had catastrophic consequences for this community. So thank you all, and best of luck in finding whoever it is, is our new planner. So thank you. I wanted to thank Councilman Cosmore. I think I have been watching the meetings from home. I think study sessions are always a great idea. It seems a lot more relaxed. You guys can just talk. And then you'll, I think in a long time, in the long range, it'll save time. You'll have, you know, you're running great, efficient meetings, but I think it, they'll still be shorter. And so I think that's a great idea. What else did you guys talk about? City administrator? I know I want to talk about that. I came in here thinking, you know, hire, hire the professional. We tried it, and I respect trying to save money and doing it by committee and all that. But I didn't see that coming, what you did. I just wanted to, also, I was pleasantly surprised. I think it's a great idea. The mayor and I have had conversations. I, you know, still, do we really need a full-time city administrator? I don't know until I sit in that seat. So when you started the conversation, you talked about options. Has, and, and so has Vince been offered a permanent part-time job as city administrator?
It's.
You don't have to answer me. Has that an option? I guess that's all.
I, if I, let's just, the simple answer to your question is if I could have Vince forever, I would.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I could have Vince forever. I would.
And I know that. So I'm saying it was that option, so obviously it was discussed and it's not an option.
We've asked Vince to give us the most that he possibly can.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time because I hear great things about you. And then the last thing I want to say, I'm sorry?
And I still look forward to some of the things I'll be working with.
Good. Yeah, the residents, we all.
Thanks for helping lobby it up. Appreciate it.
And so I'm married to a police officer, so you would think that I would know Chief Tangway, but before he came to our town, I hadn't had the chance to meet him personally. And I have an issue, all residents have an issue, with something going on at my house. And I just want to, he didn't ask me to come here, this is just totally on my own. I think hiring him as a city administrator is a great idea. And just from a resident's perspective, I called him and he was open to meet with me and he was professional. And he listened to me and he followed up and he responded to his emails.